At 6:30 PM. My Siri is enjoying this. I'd like to call the meeting order at 6:31 PM. Ms. Rosenaya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Here.
Mrs. Crawford?
Here. If you're able to stand, can you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have to add addendum items to our agenda tonight. We have Item H, the Treasures Report and Recommendations. Resolution H2, Tax Compliant. And then we also have Items J, Action Item New Business for the 2024-2025 Individual Sovereign Plans. So do I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
By Ms... Okay, so first by Ms. Egan, second by Mrs. Hamilton. Ms. Rosenaya, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes. All right. So that motion passes 5-0. Good evening, family and community. Welcome tonight. I will apologize in advance because my report is not with me. So everything I was going to say, I don't have it memorized. So I'll just keep it short because we have a big, a lot of families. But last night, I was able to attend the Winter Sports Banquet, which was recognizing the winter sports of our girl and boys' basketball teams, our girl and boys' bowling teams, our girl and boys' swimming and diving, also wrestling, as well as hockey, and cheerleading, and gymnastics. So it was a great event. They did recognize individuals who were honored by other coaches through the suburban league, as well as they recognized like our basketball team for the division champions, our bowling team, as well as, I think it was one more team, but I can't think of it. One thing I'm proud about with our district is we had 116 students who were recognized for being, getting a 3.5 or higher GPA. And, yes, I, my son was one of those who was included in that, so I'm proud of him, Cameron at the high school. So that says a lot. Not only are our students, you know, excelling well in their programs, but they're also excelling in the classrooms. So to have over 100 students recognized last night as our scholar athletes, I'm so proud of what we're doing with our district. So congratulations to all those students who was recognized last night. Also, I did want to make everybody aware with our new education. It's, I want to change the new name, Educational Opportunities Committee. Today, this week, we have been recognizing kindness and kind of sponsoring. We're raising money for the Special Olympics that is happening. So this week, they've been wearing different colors to, at the different buildings, whether it's red, today was red day. I think the other day was blue day. Tomorrow is Rock Your Hat, and also your College Day, College Day, so you can do that. And then on Friday, if you are willing to donate, you can send in money that will go towards the Special Olympics, and you can rock your special socks and wear your rainbow colors. So please spread the word for that, and that will end my president's report as of right now.
Thank you, Mrs. Crawford. Good evening, Board. Good evening, everybody. It is great to see so many folks here tonight. Thanks for coming. Beautiful day today, and I hope it sticks around. We'll see though, right? It is Ohio, and you blink your eye and something else happens. But anyhow, welcome to everybody who's joining us this evening. We have wonderful students to celebrate from RB Chamberlain Middle School and from Samuel Bissell Elementary School tonight. Before we get to that, just a few announcements. It is time to register our Class of 2038. So 2038 would be our incoming kindergarten children. So if you are a parent of an incoming kindergarten child, our Class of 2038, I laugh because 2025 can hardly wait to get out the doors. And here comes 2038, right? But if you are a parent of a young one, and it's time to register them for kindergarten, we invite you to please go on the district website. Under Wilcox Primary School, there's a lot of information about registering for preschool. And on June 2nd and 3rd at Wilcox Primary School, there's actually going to be kindergarten registration and screening that day. You have to be registered in our system in order to select an appointment. So if you could please do that, the earlier you get your information in for your child, the better it is for the school district, and we then can prepare for enough teachers and class supplies, all those kinds of things. If you currently have a preschool child in our school district, you do not need to register them for kindergarten. They're already registered as a student here in our school district, and they will be conducting kindergarten screening during the month of May for our preschool children. So this is only for students who would be new to our school district next year, incoming kindergarten children. Please, families, if you can begin the registration process now, it really does help us out. As always, if you have any questions, please feel free to call Wilcox Primary School. The staff there is amazing, and they will answer all of your questions. Board of Education, this evening, we will present Strategic Plan Update for Quarter 3 in the areas of culture, climate, and facilities. And as you know, Board, we were supposed to also talk a little bit about finances. We're going to push that to the next meeting, and we'll just have a little bit along of a report on April 2nd. Also, a reminder to our families from Wilcox, Bissell, and Dodge. A week or so ago, I sent a Parent Square invitation to you to see if you wanted to go with us in April to see Brexville-Broadview Heights Elementary School. And the reason for that is that building, Brexville-Broadview Heights Elementary School, is built in the same kind of idea as our proposed preschool through grade 6 school. So if you want to see what it looks like on the inside, this is a great opportunity for you to join us. So we have dates on April 3rd, 10th, and 17th. We ask that you please RSVP through the Parent Square that I sent you so that we can communicate that to Superintendent Jeff Harrison and his staff. Just this past Monday, members of our teaching staff went over and saw the inside of the building, and they came back very excited and have lots of ideas for the new school here, too. So if you're interested, want to come with us, we'd love to have you join us, and that is April 3rd, 10th, or 17th. And look for that Parent Square, and please RSVP so I can communicate to our friends in Brexville how many guests to expect on that, one of those nights. Also, Board of Education, I want to thank our parents and our students and staff members and Business Advisory Council. Today has been a busy day. We have our focus groups going on with respect to our strategic plan. And so today and tomorrow, many of our families raised their hand and said they'd love to give some advice, opinions, feedback about the school district, about our plan, and about planning for the future. So if you have been in one of the groups, thank you very much. The work continues tomorrow, and then we'll have a report out to the Board as to the findings of all of these focus groups. Pretty excited about that. Also, tomorrow night, we begin the circuit interviews for our RBC principal. Mr. Reese is retiring this year, and so we have been busily screening candidates. Tomorrow is a big night because tomorrow is the evening of the circuit interviews. And then what we do thereafter is our top candidate, whoever is selected as the top candidate, we actually go to that person's current school district, and we ask questions about that person. How are they as, you know, communicators? How are they as instructional leaders, all of those things? Because we want to make sure about the answers that they give, and is it really how they are? So it's a pretty longstanding process. It's a tradition that we have when we hire building principals, and it's been very, very beneficial to us. So that is going on this week as well. It's a little busy around here, I guess. Also, a reminder that spring break is next week. I'm sure I don't have to remind you. I don't have to remind the kids. They've been telling me at the high school all week, this is it, for a week. And our school resume on Tuesday, April 1st. And we want to wish all of our Tigers who are observing Ramadan and Eid al-Fitr many blessings. This is a very special time of the year for families of that faith, and we hope that this is a special time for you and your family. So now it's time to turn our attention to celebrate awesome kids, and I want to invite Mrs. Johnson, who is here, to come forward and to brag a little bit about her Bissell Tigers. Good evening, Mrs. Johnson. And I need to get your microphone for you.
Good evening, everyone. Oh, that is so elementary, isn't it? Thank you all for being here this evening. I just want to say good evening to our board members and to Superintendent Powers, and we're so excited to be, I'm so excited to be here so that I can recognize the wonderful job that our students are doing at Samuel Bissell Elementary School, at second and third graders. They come in every single day, ready. When they come in off the bus in the morning, they're so excited. Some of them are still sleepy, but they're pretty excited about coming in, and it's just so awesome to see their faces each morning. So I get a joy out of greeting them in the morning when they get off the bus. But today is a special day to recognize some of our students who have really, really done a great job, and their teachers have recognized them for doing so. So students, when I call your name, I'm going to read a little bit about you. You're going to walk up and receive your certificate from Mrs. Powers. You're then going to stand in the front of the stage here, and we'll let our parents get pictures of you. When I do second and third grade, I would like the teachers to come up and help. So come on, teachers. You can find your space up here on the stage, and then we will begin. Thank you. And as Mrs. Crawford said, it's red today, so we are representing red today. So the Students of the Month program at Samuel Bissell Elementary School recognizes outstanding student achievement at the second and third grade levels. The focus of this recognition program is on citizenship, academics, social, volunteerism, and other accomplishments that this sets the student apart from their peers. I'm going to start first with Alonzo Allen. Please come to the front, Alonzo. And this is written by his teacher, Ms. Jolly, and it says that he is a pleasure to have in class. He is extremely bright, hardworking, well-mannered. She says that he has such a fun personality, and he brings brightness to the classroom. So congratulations to Alonzo. Vivian Bachwich. And Vivian was recognized by her teacher, Mrs. Gress, and she says Vivian has a positive attitude towards learning. She is a great role model. She is very dedicated to her academics, and she uses grit every day. And at our school, grit stands for we give it our all, respond with a positive attitude, we're independent thinkers, and we get totally engaged in everything we do. So great job, Vivian. Congratulations. Abigail Cofin from Mrs. Bucknell. Abigail is a sweet girl, and she loves to help anyone in need. She is a fantastic student and absolutely loves to share her thinking with the class. She is creative, she loves to read and write, and she takes great pride in her work. Congratulations. Neva Dilon from Mrs. Robles' class. And it says she's very hardworking, she always aims to please, she puts forth a lot of effort, and she takes pride in a job well done. She is very responsible, and she wants to achieve success. She tries hard every day, and she says I appreciate her dedication. Great job. Congratulations. Natalie Jordan from Mrs. Springer's class. Well, I'll read a little bit about Natalie, and it says that she has a positive attitude towards school. She goes, she puts forth extra effort every day, and she's, she has outstanding behavior. She always comes right into the school, and she gets busy immediately. Great job, Natalie. Madison Montague from Mrs. Springer's class. Again, Madison is from Mrs. Springer's class and is nominated for his positive attitude towards his schoolwork, for his extra effort that he puts forth each day, and for his outstanding behavior. It says that he comes right into the school, he gets busy immediately, and he completes all of his work with his best effort. Congratulations. Skylar Rosello? Skylar here? And this is from Miss Conrad. And Miss Conrad says that Skylar is always pleasant and sincere. She is a wonderful friend, and she tries hard. Her favorite thing about school is math. Wow, that's pretty awesome. And her favorite color is blue. Her favorite show is Stitch. And it says that her favorite place to be is at home. So congratulations to Skylar. Keep up the good work. And this is all of our second grade students right here, so we'll give our parents a chance to take pictures of our second graders before we call our third graders. Smile, boys and girls. Think about that pizza you'll be eating tomorrow. And now for our third graders, we'll start with Jordan Adams from Mrs. Laquarta's class. Jordan has made many friends with her outgoing personality. She loves to learn at school, and she's an avid reader. She, it says, Jordan is never without a book. She especially loves music class, learning new songs on her recorder, and we're so excited because they have a concert tomorrow night, so we're excited about that. And also becoming a creative dancer. So congratulations to Jordan. Good job. Lenaya Bates from Mr. Delarussel's class. All right, and it says that she has great character. She enters the classroom each and every day with a positive attitude. She is kind-hearted, she's a hard worker, and she's a very intelligent young lady. Congratulations. Alyssa, Alyssa, I'm sorry, Alyssa Chapina. And she is from Mrs. Rowetter's class. And Mrs. Rowetter writes, she's a hard worker who enjoys daily challenges. She is helpful to her classmates, and she cares about others. She's responsible, and she really works hard to accomplish her goals. Congratulations. Paisley Kosha from Mrs. Laquarta's class. Paisley is a responsible, kind, motivated, and friendly student. She's an excellent role model, role model for her peers. She loves to learn at school and especially likes being creative in music and in art class. Congratulations. Ezra ETN Thompson from Mr. D's class. He is one of those students that is liked and respected by all of his peers. He is an easygoing leader that is always leading by example. He always strives for his personal best, and it shows in the high quality of his work. Congratulations. Kaylee Ingram from Miss Markham's class. Kaylee here? A little bit about Kaylee. She comes in each day with a positive attitude and ready to learn. She's very dedicated to her academics, and she always shows her grit each and every day. Congratulations to Kaylee. Lily Jones from Miss Belinski's class. And it says that she shows exemplary behavior and works very hard every single day in the classroom. She's always participating in the class discussions. She works well with all of her classmates, and she is always trying all the new challenges. All right, keep going, Lily. Bayam Mawawa? Is Bayam here? And it says, and this is from Mrs. Dorlan. He comes to school every day, ready to learn. He thrives on taking on challenges, and he learns new things all the time. He's very dedicated to his academics, and he puts forth tremendous effort. Congratulations. Luke Mathias? And this is written by Miss Belinski, and it says that he shows exemplary behavior, and he works very hard every single day in the classroom. It says he's very empathetic and that he is a team player. He works very well with everyone in and out of the classroom. Congratulations to Luke. Harne, Harneora Sandu from Mrs. English's class. It says he is very respectful and responsible, and he deserves to be recognized for outstanding behavior in the classroom. He is very attentive, and he has a positive attitude towards learning. He actively participates each and every day, and he is always willing to help out. Congratulations. Theo Weber from Mrs. Laquarta's class. And it says Theo is an amazing student. He is an excellent role model for his peers. He set good examples of character. It says Theo is a Cub Scout member in Twinsburg. Awesome. He has learned valuable survival skills and has made his own car for the Pinewood Derby. That's exciting. It says that Theo is creative, and he builds Lego sets in his free time that are at least 1,000 pieces or more. Congratulations to Theo. And at this time, this concludes our second and third graders. So parents, if you would like to come up and take pictures, please do so.
Good evening, parents. I just wanted to congratulate Samuel Bissell Elementary School for being recognized for the 2023-2024 Silver Award by the Ohio PPS Network and the state support team for implementation of the school-wide positive behavior interventions and supports.
If any of our second graders are still here and would like a picture, we'd like the second and third graders to come up because this is an important moment for Bissell. And Board of Education, if you'd like to also take a picture?
Aelyn Siddique. Aelyn takes interest and pride in her work and consistently strives to do her best.
Her positive attitude is contagious and she helps her classmates whenever needed. Aelyn. William Peters. William is always willing to help anyone, student or adult. As a matter of fact, as I was walking in, William held the door for me. So I know that to be true. William is also timely in completing his work. His positive attitude and smile light up a room. William. Scarlett Rosmith. Scarlett is a diligent student who gives 110% in everything she does. She is always kind to others and willing to lend a helping hand. Her ability to persevere through academic challenges is an inspiration to others. Scarlett. Lane Winnan. Lane is a shining example of hardworking, motivated student. His intelligence shows through each and each of his academic endeavors. He comes to school daily, ready for a challenge and eager to help his peers. Lane. All right, you can stay up there. We'll start with our eighth graders now. First, we have Abigail Shields. Abby is respectful, responsible, and eager to learn. She actively participates in class, completes all her assignments on time, and often asks thoughtful questions. Abigail. Neve Modi. Neve is an exceptional and high-achieving student who sets a strong example for others. Whether working independently or with his peers, Neve shows perseverance and takes pride in his work. Neve. May Zek. I don't think May was going to be able to make it, but I'm going to read about May. May's natural ability and willingness to learn is inspiring and sets a positive tone in class and amongst her peers. May. And last, we have Lucas Bradyk. Lucas is an exceptional student who treats others with respect, is very helpful in class, and is a very bright student. Lucas has so much potential ahead of him and a great future in the making. Lucas. And those are our RBC Students of the Month. So if you want to take a picture, they're all going to stay there for a couple, or a minute or so, so we can get in a nice picture.
For the sixth time in a row, we are proud to announce that RBC Chamberlain Middle School has received the 23-24 Gold Award for PPS. So congratulations.
Mrs. Crawford, that completes my report for tonight. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any committee reports?
Families want to leave?
Oh, if you, if any family does not want to stay for a regular meeting, please feel free to leave.
Good evening.
Have a good night. Thanks for coming. If you want to stay, feel free to.
Extra credit for someone? We're going to record each other next time. It'll be after their reports.
All right, I'll turn it over to you if there's no committee report.
Oh, okay.
Turn it right back over.
Thank you. Mrs. Crawford, in Board of Education, this evening, we are doing a strategic plan update for quarter three. And we're very excited tonight because as you can see by all of the students here, they have a big part of our presentation. A lot of great things have been going on in our schools. And tonight's a little time for us to brag a little bit about all that. So without further ado, I would like to ask Mr. Bandiera, who oversees our culture and climate part of the district strategic plan, to come forward and introduce what is happening here tonight. Good evening, Mr. Bandiera.
Good evening, Mrs. Powers. Good evening, Board. Thank you for the opportunity always to present to you. We're very excited with a large group of people here this evening to share about our culture and climate. As you know, our culture and climate goal focuses really on our MTSS, our multi-tiered assistance and support that we're doing at Twinsburg State School District. We're working on making sure all of our students feel represented, as we have a lot of representatives here, and respected in all of our programs. So to do that tonight, we're going to have three different presentations tonight. Our first one is talk about some multicultural experiences happening over at Bissell. Then we're going to talk about at RBC, our student groups and organizations that are happening, which we're very excited to hear about. And then, Mr. Julian Walker is going to give you an update on our MTSS process and the assistancy she's been bringing through her role as MTSS coordinator. So without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mrs. Johnson and your group four, talking about some of the multicultural experience happening at Bissell.
I think I'm more excited than the students. And I'm not going to steal their thunder, but I tell you, the partnership that we have with the high school this school year has been amazing. The high school Spanish two students, their class has come down to Bissell to, I'm not even going to steal their thunder, because I know they have slideshows that they want to share with you this evening. But super excited just to see that partnership, the high school students coming down, teaching and working with, and just leaving a lasting impression on our second and third graders. So without further ado, I will invite Ms. Markle and Mr. Santiago to the podium.
Thank you, Mrs. Johnson, and good evening, Board and Twinsburg families. We are very excited to share with you a little bit about our Twinsburg Spanish partnership this year. And to begin with, I would like to give you some background in how this program got started. All right, so last year, my daughter Mia, one of Mr. Santiago's second-year Spanish learners, came to my third-grade classroom to present a children's book she wrote in Spanish. She also brought two related activities to do with my students. Those activities included making a book with common everyday Spanish words to use in a child's home or school. My students were fully engaged and offered feedback throughout the lesson. I later found out just how impactful the Spanish lesson was with my students when other students from other third-grade classrooms were coming up to me in the hallway, speaking Spanish to me. Come to find out, my students were outside at recess, teaching them Spanish. My class later was exposed to Spanish traditions, holidays, because of their interest in learning. Mia, who taught this lesson, did a wonderful job. And I was very proud of her as her mom and teacher, and my young students really loved it. So I went to Mr. Santiago and told him how wonderful this opportunity was. We got to talking and we said we wanted to do a little bit more with our students. So the proposal was written up. Mr. Santiago, myself, and our gifted coordinator, Shelley Grady, built this partnership based on the experiences from last year. We have connected with Mr. Santiago's first block of Spanish two students. We're going to work through the glitches, right? So we've connected with Mr. Santiago's first block of Spanish two students from the Twinsburg High School. And we are using this opportunity for them to showcase their work in our second and third-grade classrooms at Samuel Bissell. We feel this is a great opportunity for our older Tigers and younger Tigers to work together, all while celebrating and learning about language and culture. Our Tigers are collaborating once a quarter. We would love to see how the program evolves over the years. This proposal provides an opportunity for our high school students to showcase their work, reinforce their learning, and their presentational skills. Our younger Tigers will get the benefit of learning another language and culture, preparing them for future learning at RBC. So as you can see here, this is Señorita Mia Paculitzky in our third-grade classroom over at Samuel Bissell. She was reading her children's book in Spanish and in English, also doing two relatable activities with our students. This is what is currently happening in our classrooms at Samuel Bissell. This is Señorita Cameron, my stepdaughter, and Señorita Teresa, actively working with our third graders. Yeah. They were singing Happy Birthday to me. It was my birthday that day. The birthday and it keeps on going. Great job, ladies. This is Señora Santiago in action with our kiddos over at Bissell. Ice cream. Our next slide is our Twinsburg High School Spanish-speaking students who have been participating in our partnership. Way to go, kiddos. You're doing an amazing job. And next, I would like to share with you what I would like to call is making a difference because of this program. We have a little girl who moved to Twinsburg and enrolled in Samuel Bissell in January. She came from Argentina. She came here to the States, a brand-new country, a brand-new school, and only speaking Spanish. As you could imagine, this was a tough transition for her. On March 11th, we had our second Spanish lesson at Bissell. This little girl was asked to help teach a Spanish lesson on body parts to her peers. Her class could see how special that was for her. In that moment, she was able to showcase what she knows. She felt celebrated and she felt recognized. This was a special moment for many of us. And knowing how much this meant to her really, really filled our hearts. There is a small clip of her working in our class, Mrs. Engler's class, on the last slide. No, okay. We will go ahead and move on to the next thing. So I would like for our students to kind of showcase what they've been doing. So if my little Tigers can come up to the front? All right, Aria. Bian girls, very good. Ame, would you like to share a little bit about what you love about this program? Bian. Data, can you share what you love about the lessons that have been taught?
I love the telephone game where basically we would get given a word saying in Spanish, we're going to have to pronounce it in English.
Bian. And Aria, how can we continue to practice Spanish, our second language, at home?
So like, you can do like Duolingo. Duolingo is like a really fun learning app that's like on your device. And it's not just like Spanish. You can learn like Korean or Indian or whatever language you want to learn. And plus, Duolingo is like just like on your device. So you can like do it every single day and get your skills, get better, mean better and better. And you can just practice anywhere, like I have friends or whatever.
Gracias. Good job, girl.
Awesome job.
Thank you, thank you. So we're going to now ask that our high school Spanish-speaking students come to the front. They're going to go ahead and share a little bit about what they love about the program.
I just want to say real quick, like, I asked my class, I have a total of 21, 22 students, and I asked, I'm going to need some volunteers to come to the presentation. And when my students were like, yeah, I'll come, I'll come, that just kind of goes to show you how awesome this program is, which is kind of cool. I'm excited to hear what they have to say. I'm nervous, too.
Good afternoon. My name is Mia. I'm Ms. Markle's daughter. And originally, when I came to return class, I was really excited to share one of my favorite subjects with all these kids. And as we came up with the partnership, it really meant a lot to me, realizing how much it's impacted them and how much they've appreciated it. And I hope with this that we can teach them how important it is to have inclusivity, both in their everyday life as well as in school, and to not only appreciate their own culture, but the other ones that they might not know about yet.
Hola, buenas noches. My name is Ashna and I had the pleasure of working with Mrs. DePew's third-grade class. And it was just really meaningful for me to see the impact that I had because like the way their curious faces would light up when like I would just teach them basic things like colors and body parts. It was really meaningful for me. And I just like to connect with the students and just have conversations and build connections with the younger kids. And I just like to connect with the students and just have conversations and build connections with the younger kids.
Hello everyone, my name's Gukaram. I got the privilege of teaching Miss Polinski's class and I had an overall great experience. I feel like the kids did too. They got to learn a language, I got to connect with them and yeah.
Hola, my name is Avni and I had the chance to work with Mrs. Watson's class. And it was a great opportunity because we were all able to connect and I feel the kids were very inspired. And hopefully this has inspired them all to maybe take Spanish when they get to eighth grade or above.
Hi, I'm Charlotte and I was also with Avni and Mrs. Watson's class. And when we were in there, we'd always have to ask them for the games like for volunteers and they were all so excited and they all wanted to go. And kids would even come up to us and ask if they could go again. And I really liked that they were enjoying what we taught them and like Avni said. I hope they go up to learn Spanish because it's really, it's a really great class.
Hola, I'm Avni. I had the opportunity to teach Miss Dorland's class, who's also my third grade teacher. It was really nice connecting with the kids for I also moved to the United States when I was at a young age and I speak another language at home. And I wanna say around 25% of the kids in my class also spoke another language such as Russian and some spoke Hindi slash Punjabi. And some of them even spoke Spanish. So it was like something that I could connect with them on and it just made the whole experience very meaningful to me. And I just walked out of there with like a different perspective on teaching and teachers and how important it is to make like learning engaging yet like impactful. So, thank you.
Hola, my name is Kate. I think my overall favorite part was being able to build relationships with the students and watching them fall in love and become eager to learn a new language and culture. It was truly inspiring just to see how excited they were to learn something new, be able to connect and be able to communicate to other people who are different than them. And I can't wait to go back and see them.
Hola, I'm Lucy and I just thought it was really fun just to see all their faces light up when we were like teaching them new things. And they were just so eager to learn and they really like picked up on the Spanish quite easily, which I thought was so cool. And I just really thought it was so fun seeing how much fun they had learning.
My name is Dia and I taught Mr. Labus's third grade class. And my favorite part, I enjoyed it a lot because they'll remember this moment when they go on to Spanish in the future and they had a really fun time.
Hola, que pasa? My name is Cameron McClafferty and I'm actually a junior at THS and I'm in Spanish four. Senor Santiago taught me my freshman year. And honestly, it was his teaching that truly gave me the love of Spanish. Like I wanna, I want to minor in it in like in college. I love this language and being able to share it with other kids and to teach them has actually really meant a lot to me. Because, I mean, it's beautiful being able to create a new community and learn so much about other cultures. And I think it was just a beautiful experience and I hope that other kids get to experience it too.
Okay, without further ado, I'm gonna cry that you guys are amazing. Really, we couldn't do this partnership without you and we're so proud of you and you were such an inspiration. And our little Tigers, you're doing such an amazing job and we're really proud of your growth too. So, we would like to award you with an award for your dedication, hard work and achievement. Great job. So this award goes out to Jada Hudson. Last is Harmit Khor. Aria Davy. My daughter Mia Paculitzky. And my stepdaughter Cam McClafferty. My lovely mom, they have two of my kiddos in this program.
I mean, phenomenal, like awesome. We got Dia Ja. Caitlin Gress, which she felt to say that she taught in her mom's class. Lucy. Avni. Charlotte Erin. I gotta do it, but he goes by Lil Girk in my class, so. Lil Girk. Avni. Ashna. Last one at least, so I had Claudia, who was not here, she's ill. Claudia, just a quick, quick story. Claudia is the, my student that was in Simona's class. And something that kinda touched me, she couldn't be here, she was actually very bummed out that she couldn't be here. I remember what she said to me when we got back to the high school. She was having a rough day that day and little did she know about the whole Simona situation and whatnot. And she got back, we talked, gathered cafeteria and she said like, it was so touching that I did that for her. Like I had no idea and I didn't know about it until afterwards. It kinda made me tear up because in the same way that Avni, you know, mentioned and Simona, like I myself also came to the States and I didn't have an opportunity like this, so it's kinda cool. Kinda brought tears to my eyes and just to hear that Simona smiled that day to Claudia, like props to Claudia. She's a phenomenal student and I gotta give her her flowers even though she's not here, so. Claudia. We can't wait to go back again in May, hopefully. And I love this Spanish program, it's great.
Mia just has one last thing to say.
I just wanted to throw out a special thanks to Senor Santiago 'cause not only is he an amazing representation of our Spanish in our high school, but he is truly one of the best teachers I've ever had. He not only cares about his students and their academics, he really works to care about them as humans. And it means so, so much to me as well as all these kids hear what he does for us.
What do you say to me all the time in class? I hate you, I hate you, I hate you.
Let everyone play off for a second, but how do we top that? It's gonna be hard to top that tonight. If there's one person that can't top that, it's Mr. Reese, who's gonna talk to us about the student groups at RBC this year.
Thank you, Mr. Bandiera. No matter what, I always have to follow the Bissell kids. That's just not fair. Believe it or not, not every middle schooler loves coming to school to learn math, science and social studies. And that could create a challenging environment for a group of 13 and 14 year olds. And so, part of being a gold medal school is to find ways where all kids can connect to school in some way. And maybe math, science and social studies isn't their thing, but it's our duty to help them find their thing and that thing where they're good at, the thing that makes them special and makes them wanna wake up in the morning and come and be part of school. And there's just countless studies over the correlation between success, not just in school, but later in life, and being involved in school activities and the importance of that. And so over the years, we've developed quite a few different groups. Some of them meet after school, some of them meet during school. And today I wanted to highlight some of those groups and some of those activities that we do. And the first one is our Reading and Writing Festival. And we have over 20 kids participate in this every year and they're just a group of kids who like to read. And they read the books that are part of the festival and they get together with Mrs. Walters in our media center. They do their little book club, they're connected. And in a couple of weeks, they will be going to Kent State where they, each year they meet an author. They have some contests. Last year we came in first place in the writing contest. And so it's just a unique way to connect kids and we're very thankful for the support. Because these are a lot of times kids who maybe aren't in athletics or maybe they don't do well in math, but they love to read and get together and that's how they're connected. Next we have our STEM Club. And STEM Club gets together with Mrs. Henderson after school and they do science activities. My favorite one of all time was one spring they tapped the maple tree outside of RBC and they collected syrup. And then they voted whether it was gonna be pancakes or waffles. And I believe pancakes won, so the kids made pancakes and then they may use the syrup that they had gathered, which is quite the process I've learned through the maple tree. And so the STEM Club is one of, another way we connect kids. Next we have our Student Government. And this year we have 28 kids in Student Government. They plan our pep rallies, which are out of this world. They go around school taking pictures, they do a slideshow at the end of the year. And tomorrow I'm asking many of them to be part of the next Strategic Action Plan. So they're gonna meet with Dr. Eagle and do some of our planning. And so we have 28 students in Student Government. The next group is what we call our Crayola Crew. And they come and they meet in the morning before school and they listen to music and they do art. And a lot of times kids with anxiety, we put in that group because they know when they get to school, they're gonna do something that is relaxing, it's fun, that they wanna do. They're with, that's run by our Beachbrook counselor, Mrs. Hunt, who's actually an art therapist. And so that fear, sometimes the hardest thing for those kids is just getting through the door. Now they're not going straight to that class that they have anxiety about. They're going to color and listen to music and talk to Mrs. Hunt. And that has significantly, I believe, increased our attendance with those students who struggle with anxiety. Our next group is our Celebration Club. And they plan our monthly celebrations for our different groups that we have. And they just put together an incredible Black History Month celebration. It culminated with, they got the Blue Diamonds to come over and the staff team from the high school as part of our pep rally. Best pep rally we ever had. They brought in speakers, they brought in fraternities. And so they met with Mrs. Moore and Mrs. Henderson and they find ways to celebrate our different groups. And as most of you know, this week we're wearing red today and we're celebrating our students with disabilities this week. And next we have our Girls Group. Our Girls Group meets every Wednesday and they just talk about girl stuff and handling emotions. And I'm not invited to that group, so I don't know really, I can't really speak too much about what's going on there. But I know that they look forward to that every Wednesday. I mentioned earlier our Power of the Pen Group. They practice every week with Mrs. Copin and Mr. Peterson. And they hopefully will get the coaches, the Power Pen Coaches of the Year because they deserve it. And we have, we have like 25 kids in there, but they don't all get to compete. But they all get to go to the competition and they like cheer each other on. And I think it's the coolest thing. And like you see at the end of the Cavs bench, not everyone gets in the game, but those guys are always cheering for each other. And I wish, I want like always point that out to our athletes, like you're not always gonna be the guy in the game. You might not get the most playing time, but be part of the, that's our Power of the Pen Team. They like all show up at the competitions, even if they're not writing. And they celebrate and cheer for each other. So it's just an amazing way that those kids are connected. Next we run our Spelling Bee as a club. And so the kids sign up and then they practice in one of my language arts teachers' classrooms after school for the bee. And they spell each other words and they do practice. Then we finally, we had our school Spelling Bee and Sophie Nana won that. And last week, last Saturday Sophie went to Akron Beacon Journal Spelling Bee. And she finished in the top 50%, she made it through three rounds there. And not everyone makes it. First you have to win your school, then you have to take an online test, then you get to go. And then Sophie beat about half the kids in Summit County and she ended up going through three rounds. So that was, that was really awesome. Performing arts have grown dramatically, which is kind of a double edged sword. Once it's awesome that that many kids are performing, but now we can't fit like the orchestra on the stage at the same time. So my orchestra concerts are now twice as long. So I miss out on getting home in a timely fashion, but that's a good problem to have. Because all of these groups connect kids and I encourage them because they do so many cool things when they get to high school. And you can see our numbers there, that's like 250 kids alone out of our schools who's connected to school in a way with a special group that they just perform in school but outside of school. Next we have the Athletics, of course. And we have about 20% of the school in spring athletics right now between track and softball and baseball. But over the course of the, you can see the numbers up there. Hundreds and hundreds of students, athletes and students who participated and were connected to school through athletics. Our Art Club is huge, 31 kids in the Art Club. And that's one of the rain barrels that they're painting. And so kids who identify or connect through art are able to do that. The rain barrels are with the Tinkers Creek Conservatory. And they're working on water preservation and we're learning about how you have to, they had to paint all the barrels white. And then they're going to put art on them, paint them art with art, because you can't have any light get through the barrels because that would create algae. And so you can't have any, and then they put a finishing polyurethane coat on them. And then they're identifying spots around town to place the rain barrels to collect water. So that's a collaborative, a collaborative project. And the art kids are learning a little bit of science and didn't even know they liked science, but now they do. And our next group, our next two groups, I'm gonna let Mr. Sanders. Mr. Sanders is new to RBC this year, is our Dean of Students. I cannot say enough about what he does, the impact he's had on our culture and on our students. The energy he brings is irreplaceable. And so we are very, very fortunate that we were able to have Mr. Sanders working with us this year. And he runs two separate groups with the kids. He runs one group called the Fit Club and another group called the Tiger Men on a Mission. And I told the people, the girls, the teachers that run the Girls Group, I said, you have to get a cooler name because Mr. Sanders now, he changed Boys Group to Tiger Men on a Mission, so we gotta up the Girls Group name. But for this year, he wins. So I'm gonna introduce Mr. Sanders and he's brought some students as well.
Mr. Reese is retired this year, he's great for our building and obviously we're gonna for sure miss him. Fit Club, I love Fit Club. First thing, when I wake up in the morning, get out of bed, you know, I think energy is most important. Our kids don't think so as much. I got a quick story, I think it's our first week of school this year. I'm really loud in the morning. Kids, if kids come in, Mr. Reese, I usually greet them at the door, good morning. You know, first week of Fit Club, I'm yelling, get to Fit Club, get to Fit Club. Half of them are sleeping in the cafeteria, they're looking at me crazy. But every Monday, Wednesday and Friday, as you can ask some of those boys back there that are involved in Fit Club, I do bring the energy. But I love Fit Club because, you know, it brings a bunch of different guys together and they're able to not only work out and just get ready and motivated for the day, but it allows them to communicate, allows them to learn more about each other, you know, different views, different perspectives in it. know, different views, different perspectives in it. You know, a lot of times, often in there, whether it's fifteen or twenty minutes, we find ourselves in there having just great dialogue, you know, talking about the day before, talking about future weekend plans, talking about, you know, sports activities that are going on, and just basic debates that we love to have. It does, it does get tricky, but you know, obviously, buses rolling in here and there, but we have a great system to intact, to where they work out at seven-nineteen, you let them go get their breakfast if they want it, and they go right to class. So, they've done a good job of being leaders, and definitely sets a positive tone throughout the day. Next group is our Tiger Men on a Mission. Our Tiger Men on a Mission group is just a group of fifteen young men comprised of just doing great things. We establish and talk about the seven daily habits, and you know, the big thing that I stress to the boys a lot is take care of your mental. You know, these boys are great leaders, and they've been, you know, initiated in our program because of their leadership style. Whether it's, you know, checking a friend, checking on a friend when he's having a bad day, whether it's, you know, stopping a confrontation between, you know, two boys or two girls that may escalate in the hallway or so. And I think, you know, we have three young men back here that have just demonstrated and embodied, you know, what it means to be great future Tigers. I'm going to bring up Levi Harris, Liam Clark, and Kaden Crawford. We can move on to the next slide. These boys will just, you know, talk about, you know, the daily habits of highly effective people, you know, being proactive, obviously, sharpening our mental. I'm going to let Levi Harris start.
Good evening.
Today, I'm going to be talking about the seven daily habits of highly effective people. The first one is to be proactive, and so, pretty much what that means is to control what you can control, and to make sure you are focused in at all times. The second one is to begin with the end in mind, so when you're trying to achieve something, you always want to make sure you have a goal in mind, and that you are trying to get to that goal, and...
Before, as you can see on the slide here, pictures, this here is one of our first lessons we did. The boys here are kind of playing a team-building activity, this was right after kind of they wrote their reason why. We had an activity where we gave each student in there a sticky note. They wrote kind of their reason why, you know, why they wake up every single day, what's their objective, what's their drive. We also had each student talk about, you know, things they can improve on. You know, we're not perfect, we're, we all have things that we need to do to get better at, and I think it was great just for them to express, you know, ways that they need to improve on themselves as a young man. Go ahead, Liam.
All right, so, number one was put first things first, like putting school in front of like sports and stuff. Number four is think, win, win. And number five is seek, seek first to understand, then to be understood. I'm going to hand it off to Kaden.
Number six is like leadership, and then number seven, sharpen the sword, taking care of your mental.
Let me ask you a question, Kaden. All right, leadership, what leadership skills have you demonstrated this year?
Leadership, I demonstrated like going, like playing basketball, and like talking to our teammates and stuff.
Liam, take that mic for me. How have you taken, how have you been taking care of your mental throughout the school year?
Like, whenever there's like something happening, like a lot of like drama and stuff, and it comes back to me or something, like, you kind of try and break it up and stuff, and it helps me end the flow of things.
And Levi, all right, win, win, think, win, win, how do you feel about that statement?
Win, win, I think that means to, like, what does think mean? I think think on win means to, like, you may not win all the, all of the little goals, but you'll reach the end goal in the end, because, you know, in the beginning, sometimes you're not, like basketball per se, I wasn't the best at it, but I worked to get better, and yeah.
And ended in a winning situation, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Thank you, guys.
We appreciate seeing our students so involved in those outside activities during the school day and outside the school day as well. The last thing I may present on for our Culture and Climate Goal this evening is our MTSS Coordinator, Ms. Julian Walker. And as you recognize, Board, last, around this time last year, we came to you with this proposal that we have been, for a long time, having the disproportionality challenges within our district, specifically related to special education. And part of that, part of the thing that we were seeing as one of our root causes was that inconsistent practice for our MTSS process across the district. One of the things we used some of our redirected funds for was employing Ms. Julian Walker as our MTSS Coordinator. She came to us with wonderful experience, a former Tiger, and then back as a Tiger again, and we're excited to have her tonight to kind of share some of her progress and the steps that she's taking to bring us a consistent MTSS process across our district. So, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity for allowing me to get in front of you. Thank you for the opportunity to come and speak to you tonight, to give you a brief recap of what's going on as far as MTSS goes in our district. As you've seen, even as evidenced tonight, the phenomenal programs that we have in place, both academics and social, emotional, we still do have students that struggle. And so, the process of MTSS gets together within the schools to help those students. As a brief review, MTSS is a structured program, and it's a proactive framework for all students, and it is focused on academics, behavior, social, emotional, and attendance. And what it does is it uses data collection and interventions that are evidence-based to help our students be successful. Through MTSS, it's a multi-tiered instruction with different layers of support, and as you can see evidenced on the screen, there are three different layers that we kind of put together at each school. And Tier One would be differentiate, or Tier One is instruction for all students that is differentiated based on students' needs within the classroom. And if we find students that are not being successful at our Tier One, we can meet and come together as a team throughout the building and implement any Tier Two interventions, which gives a little bit more intensive, structured to their day and to their academics. And then, even then, if they're not successful with Tier Two, we might even implement a Tier Three, which is usually one-on-one, more opportunities throughout the week to get extra practice or extra support wherever they may need it. Some of the things up here, I'm sure you've seen this before, but some of the things that MTSS is not, is it is not just a pathway for special education, but rather, it's designed to help all students and any student who may be struggling in one of the areas that I've mentioned before. It also allows our schools to come together more collaboratively, where teachers don't feel like they're working alone and might have to solve some problems only within their classroom. It gets together the experts at the team and even around the district, who may be able to provide some support. And we found that one of the most important keys to MTSS is prevention is better than a cure. It's getting ahead, checking the data, checking our resources, and actually putting together a plan for students who may need help. The Twinsburg City Schools has two goals for MTSS this year, and I worked with People Services and Curriculum Department to come up with the goals. And one of the goals we found is that we need a consistent implementation of vocabulary and terms of MTSS throughout the buildings. I've had the opportunity to meet with every building and review their process, and attend several meetings, and every building is working so, so hard, but everyone does it a little bit differently. So, one of our main goals was to come up with terms that we can use throughout the district. And the second thing to do would be to put together a guidebook that would be for each school, the teachers would have it, and again, it would have that consistency from when they're starting, at Wilcox, going all the way through the high school. So, where are we now with that? Like I said, I've had the opportunity to meet with every school and kind of go through their process. We were able to give a survey out to the staff at the beginning of the year. We did have one-hundred-and-forty responses, which I thought was excellent. And of those responses, we found that about thirty-five percent of the teachers felt that MTSS was really working very well in our building. And that's not to say that that's a low number. A lot of them have very, very positive things to say about all the hard work that's going on, but consistency came up as one of the biggest challenges. So, that's one of the things that we're going to focus on. We also talked about collaboration time, and that's not only amongst themselves as teachers, but with the experts in the building. And then, also, even the sharing of knowledge of best practices and additional evidence-based Some of the current action steps that we have going on right now is we have quarterly meetings with the principals to review the MTSS process itself. I've also had the opportunity to meet with the different leader groups within the schools, as mentioned up there, from assistant principals to related services. We also have a draft of a proposal for the vocabulary words and for the guidebook. These goals, we also, with these goals, we should have our, we will have our vocabulary, our common vocabulary terms put together by the end of the year, as well as a guidebook for you to see and for approval. And then, we even have future goals to do something for our parents, to create a guidebook for MTSS for our parents, and whether that's an actual book that we pass out, or in even some type of publication on the website, so that they know that what is available. So, thank you for the opportunity to review this with you tonight.
Thank you for the opportunity this night to share all these great things happening across the district in terms of our culture and climate. We appreciate, we appreciate Mrs. Walker and her expertise, and, you know, multiple ranges of experience, help our teams find out what the best way to help some of our students is as well. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Strickland, who's going to talk to us about our facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Bandera, members of the Board and community. It's hard to follow all these acts before me, but I've got some Dodge kids that I'm going to show off here in a minute. So, our facilities goals are posted up there for the year. We are still doing really well budget-wise. I will say, and we said this last meeting, this winter was pretty brutal, so our paving endeavors and some roofing repairs this coming summer will be a tightrope on the budget, but we're still doing a good job there. Tiger Legacy Project is rolling right along. We did put project boards outside in the lobby for folks to see tonight about the proposed project. And I could talk all night about facilities and all of that, however, I want to welcome some new friends of mine. I'm going to let Mr. Holland from Dodge introduce them. These are sixth-grade students, and they are members of the Principal Stripe Committee and part of the Student Advisory. And I got the opportunity to meet with them, and they talked about, from a student's perspective, challenges to learning and to just being a kid at their age at Dodge, and what they would like to see in a new building. And it was a pretty cool conversation and pretty cool kids. So, I'm going to welcome Mr. Holland up, and he can introduce them.
Good evening, everyone. So, you've heard me talk a lot about our Principal Stripe Committee. They do a lot of advising of me to help make Dodge a better place. So, what we have is three young men who are actually going to introduce themselves as part of their leadership roles. They represent three of sixteen, excuse me, eighteen members of the Principal Stripe Committee, one from each team. And so, their role is not only to advise me, but to be leaders in the classroom, take information back to their classroom, get feedback from their classroom. And so, that's kind of what you're going to see today. However, to this activity today, they took leadership in amongst the entire group, and what you're going to hear are their thoughts unfiltered. And we worked on the language a little bit, but it is their thoughts unfiltered about what they feel about their current building and plan moving forward to a new building.
Hello, my name is James Carter, and I'm going to be presenting my perspective for the classrooms in a new school. I think we need brighter and more vibrant colors, because colors can play a big part in learning. For example, green and blue promotes creativity and increases anxiety, and yellow and orange is good for engagement and can boost energy, but too many colors can overstimulate, can be overstimulating. I think we also need bigger classrooms, because in Dodge, the classrooms are cramped and have little tunnel room. And with bigger classrooms, students can have room for physical activities. And I think we need better quality desks, because the desk at Dodge can be easily broken, and students can have a lot more focus with more comfortable desks. I think we also need soundproof walls, because students, learning can be disrupted from classrooms and people talking in the hallways.
Hello, my name is Anthony Gerke, and I'm going to talk about the Playground and Recession Project for our new school building. I think we should have new and improved basketball hoops that are really nice and solid, so that kids can feel like they're actually playing on a real hoop with a good rim and net and a whole backboard. The ones at Dodge have no net, and they, each one of them is taller or shorter than the other, and it can make some kids feel uncomfortable when they're shooting. I think we need more field space for soccer and football for our new building, because at Dodge, we have a ton of field space outside the blacktop, but we're not allowed to use any of it, because that belongs to the Twinsburg varsity teams. And we need a playground and blacktop material that will not be affected by a type of weather, like rain or snow or heavy winds, because at Dodge, we have a playground, but it has mulch, so we only get to play on it like seven to ten times a year, because it's always raining or like unfortunate weather.
Hi, my name is Nick Welch, and I'll be giving the student perspective on the hallways at lunch. We think we need bigger lockers and better storage, because we feel rushed when we have to put all of their stuff in a small locker in a short amount of time. Next, I think we need hallway directions for new students, because there could either be new students here or students who are just beginning school that need to know the ways, or any students, because they need to know the ways to their classroom. And next, a garden for fresh veggies or fruits for lunch, for healthy lunch. I think we need a garden, because it will help kids have a better dietary plan and be healthier for physical activities. More choices for foods for kids' well-being. I think that kids need more choices for food, because if they don't have an appetite for the foods that are presented for each day, then they can just choose any foods that they have any other days of the week.
I'm going to do the heating and cooling project for the building. Our heating and cooling project should be a lot quieter and not disrupt the classrooms as much as it does at Dodge. The air vents are always very... The air vents are always very loud and sometimes distracting. And then janitors have to come in and fix it and that disrupts the whole learning process. And we should have ceiling fans because if it's not working, we should, there should be ceiling fans so that nice cool air can still come on the classroom even if the vent isn't working. We should have windows that can slide open and close, but have screens so that bugs can't get in and, but keep the cool air flowing in. And teachers should be able to control the temperature in the rooms by like some remote or something at their desk that they can do. If the kids are worried about it being too hot or too cold, the teachers can adjust it to whatever make, to whatever makes the kids feel comfortable in their own classroom.
Can we borrow you tomorrow for a video?
So just one quick thing, we were preparing for this and I asked the kids, when, when is the last time they had a window that opened? And a lot of them said, never at Dodge, never had a classroom that had a window that opened. So I, I found that very interesting. I'll close on, if these three young men look familiar, so a couple of weeks ago when we did our board recognition in the video, this is three of the six that presented for you, so they're back again showing their leadership, which we appreciate.
Great job, thank you.
It's a very, very good job. You did a very nice job of speaking and you didn't read, and Mr. Holland, they didn't read everything. They were looking up at us up here with their eyes, talking, excellent job, young men, excellent.
Gentlemen, do you want to go up by the board and do a picture?
All right, so the last two slides that we had had on facilities were just updates to the Tiger Legacy Project from the last time that we talked. These were additions that the board had discussed with us about intentions for the Bissell property and the Wilcox property. You can also find all the Tiger Legacy Project information on our website. But we wanted to highlight the Bissell Nature Park concept and all of the components are listed on there. And it's a really cool idea in that there would be a learning pavilion, an amphitheater, a walking path. I'm cutting out on sound, sorry. Natural meadows, a trail that goes through the woods that our cross-country could use, the community could use, the whole thing. And one of the most exciting things, really two components, we would partner with numerous area organizations for grant funding for this. As well as be able to transplant native plant and wildlife species from the proposed new school site to the Bissell site. So for anybody that is, you know, paying attention to the natural impact of the project, we feel like this is a win really for everyone. So we're excited about the potential there at Bissell. And then at Wilcox, if you have heard us present about the Tiger Legacy Project, you've heard that we have been talking with a company called the National Fitness Campaign or NFC. And what they do is they partner with school districts and communities to bring fitness parks to active communities. And when Superintendent Powers and I met with them, they had a really neat activity monitor that's satellite-driven and it taps into everyone's smartwatches and fitness apps. And Twinsburg is really a thriving, active community. People are outside and they're on the move. And they were very interested to talk with us about the potential of bringing a court like this here. And the pavement material that the gentleman that spoke with before me, the young men from Dodge, what they mean is it's kind of a, like a spongy track-like material. And that is what is on these fitness courts. It's weatherproof all year round, shock resistant. So you see on that, on that picture there that half of it is like a yoga or aerobic studio type thing, concept. And then the other half is parkour activity equipment. And all of it is weatherproof, so it's obviously outside all year round. The package includes a yearly maintenance and check by the company. And then we part, we would partner, they help you set up with all kinds of corporate sponsorships and grants. So again, this is a very minimal impact financially, but we feel like is a really neat, multi-age, multi-generational potential in the community. Because really families of all ages could, could use it. And there would be the intention as well to build a handicap accessible playground nearby. So let's say you've got a family that the kids are too small or can't use the equipment, there's something for them to do there as well. So we just wanted to introduce those two concepts for Bissell and Wilcox as part of the Tiger Legacy Project.
And you know what, Mr. Strickland, I think Twinsburg, there's so many opportunities to get out and be active. There's, we have Liberty Park, Lev Meadow, the park behind Idlewood. And this would be a perfect location because we don't have much on this end in this area. And it's, it's just one more place where people can meet and be active and, and do something outdoors. And like I said, great, I think a great location.
Yep, we agree. A lot of cool opportunities, cool things happening. So does anyone have any questions? If not, that concludes our strategic plan update for this quarter and we thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll start with H1. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the following meeting minutes. Regular meeting of February nineteenth, twenty twenty five. Special meeting of February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Hamilton, second, second by Ms. Egan, any discussion? There being now Ms. Roseni, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes, and that motion passes five zero. H2, motion to remove agenda resolution H2, tax compliant, TFI, Twinsburg, Ohio LLC, two one five zero. Wait, hold on. I'm jumping ahead.
We did remove that.
Hold on, I'm, I'm going ahead.
You're doing well, Mrs. Crawford.
Huh?
H2 was removed by the agenda.
Am I supposed to do this one right now? Okay, I was doing it right, okay. I was like, oh, okay. Highland Road, Twinsburg Parcel Number six four zero zero nine zero zero, do I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Travis, any discussion?
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes, and that motion passes five zero. All right, number three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the filing of a complaint for tax year twenty twenty four on account of a recent sale transfer of the property as provided in RC five seven one five one nine, as sent to the board under separate cover. Tax, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the filing of a complaint for the tax year twenty twenty four on account of a recent sale transfer of the property as provided in the RC five seven one five point one nine, as sent to the board under separate quarter. Cover, I'm sorry, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the filing of complaint for tax year twenty twenty four on account of a recent sale transfer of the property as provided in the RC five seven one five point one nine, as sent to the board under separate cover. And then five, resolve the Twinsburg of Education approves the filing of complaint for tax year twenty twenty four on account of a recent sale transfer of the property as provided in RC five seven point, five seven one five point one nine, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion? So moved, so moved by Mrs.
Second.
Who was that, Davis? Okay, second by Ms. Hamilton, is there a discussion?
I would just like to add that we do have exhibits H3 to 5 that was shared with the board. It doesn't show on the agenda.
Yeah. All right, and can you?
Mrs. Travis? Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Yes, that motion passes five zero. All right, item I. Resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the certified licensed personnel and or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Number two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the classified personnel and or contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibit as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. And number three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education accepts the supplemental contract recommendations detailed in the attached exhibits as per the dates, terms, and other applicable conditions specified, pending satisfactory ORC background checks. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Egan? Second by Mrs. Travis, and any discussion?
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford? Yes, and that motion passes five zero. J, action one, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the proposal for an overnight extended student trip for the Twinsburg High School varsity baseball team to travel to Columbus, Ohio to compete against other high school teams. The team will depart on March twenty eighth, twenty twenty five and return on March twenty ninth, twenty twenty five. The cost of the trip is being paid by the Athletic Booster Baseball Account, as sent to the board under separate cover. Number two, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the first of two possible extensions to the agreement for internet service with the Northeast Ohio Network for Educational Technology, NEONET, from July first, twenty twenty five through June thirty, twenty thirty, at an annual cost of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. This exercises our voluntary extension per the terms and conditions set forth in the original agreement approved on April fifteenth, twenty twenty. The dates set forth in the original agreement are July first, twenty twenty through June thirty of twenty twenty five. This is a general fund expenditure. Three, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education determines the impracticality of transportation for the schools and students listed below for the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five school year for the Ohio Department of Education in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section three three two seven point zero one. Lists of students kept on file in the Transportation Office. The maximum amount of payment will be five hundred eighty-three dollars and eighty-six cents per student. These students are in addition to the students approved at the July seventeenth, twenty twenty four, through August twenty first, twenty twenty four, October ninth, twenty twenty four, wait, it's not through, these are just separate days, August ninth, twenty twenty four, October twenty third, twenty twenty four, November sixth, twenty twenty four, and December eleventh, twenty twenty four, Board of Education meetings. Number four, resolve that the Board of Education approves the job description for the Twinsburg Alternative Program, TAP Consultant, for the attached exhibit. Number five, resolve that the Board of Education approves the revised job description for the Administrative Assistant Elementary School Principal, per the attached exhibit. And number six, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education revises the twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five strategic plan action step in the goal area of culture and climate as follows. During the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, through multi-tiered systems of support MTSS, the Twinsburg City School District will support a culture where all students are represented and respected as demonstrated through a consistent process aligned and implemented between our schools as measured by the MTS, MTSS end of the year audit. Do I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Hamilton?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Davis, any discussion? Ms. Roseni, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes, and that motion passes five zero. Action, item J. Number seven, resolve that the Twinsburg Board of Education approves the twenty-four, twenty-five individual severance plans with educators preferred Corporation, EPC, at that following address. Teachers participating in these plans are Margaret Kerlik, Edward Lypnos, and Christine McNar. These individual severance plans are in addition to the EPC Employee Severance Plan, originally approved on August seventh, twenty twenty four, and amended on December fourth, twenty twenty four, as sent to the board under separate cover. Do I have a motion? So moved by Ms. Travis?
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan, any discussion? Ms. Roseni?
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Mrs. Crawford? Yes, and that motion passes five zero. Miscellaneous, any?
Yes, I do. The music world of Twinsburg schools continues to excel. So we're going to offer congratulations to our symphonic band. For the fourth year in a row, they received their highest honor of superior, which means that they will now in April, the twenty-fifth or twenty-sixth of April, go on to the state competition for the symphonic band. Also, quite an accomplishment from each of the judges in each one of the categories, they all received a number one, which is the top score that you can get. And to get it from all judges in all categories is just phenomenal. So congratulations to, I will say to Mr. Bonnetz, but in the, in the mix of that, it's also Ms. Gossett and Mr. Resnick and all of the families and parents of all the children who have just stayed with the band and the music and have earned that place in that symphonic band. Then the concert band also travels to those competitions. And for the second year in a row, they received an excellent rating, which is again, very, very good rating. But on top of that, and, and I had the honor from when I was a band mom to, to go on, with, you know, company, the, the kids, the trip and, and the competition. After they perform, they are then taken into a room where no one goes in but the band director and the, and the band. And this is for symphonic and concert. And they are handed a sheet of music that they have not necessarily ever seen before. And they get so many minutes, and that's it, just so many minutes, that they have to sight read, to look at it, think about it, try to pick it out, and then they have to play it. And they received all ones on their sight music performance. So, you know, to just get a cold piece of music as a, as a freshman sophomore in high school and be able to play and get a one from the judge, just again, another major accomplishment for our, our music department. So congratulations there to Ms. Gossett, but again, to Mr. Bonnetz, Ms. Gossett, Mr. Resnick, all the families that have children in our music program. They're just becoming just phenomenal in all areas of, you know, we did the orchestra, the, the singers, the groups of singing and vocal music. And now the band has pulled off again, so congratulations to our music department.
And I also do think the band and the orchestra save travels for this weekend because I think they're all heading to New York City to perform. So I hope, you know, wish them safe travels and good luck and have a, have a blast, you know, and have that, enjoy that experience for sure.
Yes, for sure. And that was part of my president's report.
We're piecing it together for you.
They pieced, they pieced that one together for me. Another part that was in there that I'm able to pull in now is that I want to congratulate, there was students at CBCC who was able to attend last week. They attended the CBCC, I'm, I'm, sorry, they competed at the BPA State Leadership Conference that was in Columbus. These students are now able to head to compete at the National Leadership Conference, which will be in Orlando, May seventh through the eleventh. Damon Hoodie, he's a senior, he's actually ranked number one in Ohio in network administrative using Cisco. Alex Miller is a senior who's ranked number seven in Ohio for the database applications. Nicole Nissenbaum is a junior ranked number seven in Ohio for advanced desktop publishing. Evan Sa, uh, Joe and Shaw's son, Evan Shaw's, I don't know, I couldn't just say that. He's a junior ranked number five in Ohio in Java programming. And Anthony Yusoff is a senior ranked number three in Ohio for website design team. So that's very exciting to see all the different things that they're able to do, all their talents, and for them to get that experience. So congratulations.
Great job, nice. All right, I don't even have exciting news to share or anything, but students and teachers and staff, you're going to be having spring break soon. So whether you have a staycation or vacation planned, I hope you enjoy your time off and, and just, you know, relax and, and get to enjoy and have a few fun things planned. And last grading period, so everybody finish strong and keep up the hard work.
All right, thank you. So the board does have a need for executive session. So the Board of Education will enter into executive session at eight twenty-one PM to consider the employment discipline. into executive session at 8:21 PM to consider the employment, discipline, and compensation of public employees as per the Board of Education Policy Number 0166A. I'll make that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan, Ms. Roseni.
Mrs. Crawford?
Yes.
Mrs. Egan?
Yes.
Mrs. Hamilton?
Yes.
Mrs. Travis?
Yes.
Mrs. Davis?
Yes.
Thank you. I do not see the need for us to come back, so I hope you have a great evening, and again, enjoy your spring break next week. Thank you.